We are so happy this evening to have a wonderful group of people in our audience tonight, and they're from the Hatch Leadership Group. They're going to be making a presentation for us. The teachers involved are Alice Linsmeyer, Gretchen Mahin, and Karen Hoffman. And would you like to come to the podium first? Or should you, would you like your first group to come up with you? And you can introduce them. And we've got Diego Ryan, Joanna Romero, Michael Propepio, I'll let you say that, and Maria Reeters. Hi there.
Hi. Thank you for giving us space to have our amazing students show some of their community action projects. I want to say thank you to all the council members, but in particular, City Manager also, Magda Gonzalez, who came and inspired the kids with her story. And you brought staff over that came to listen to the kids, and that was great. Under Mr. Ward's great support, my two co-leaders, Karen Hoffman and Gretchen Megan and Patricia Bodas, who couldn't come tonight, started the Leadership Club. These two women thought that there could, there was so much potential in the 4th and 5th graders, that they started a Leadership Club last year, right? With the idea of just developing leaders, and everybody's a leader. So it was an open participation, open volunteer of the students to come and give up their lunch hour. So we want to really recognize that the students went above and beyond to be able to do this. And so what we basically did was develop leadership skills, but then we did community action projects. And we want to also recognize and thank the support of their parents that helped them in the problem-solving cycle, which was to identify a problem. Everyone talked about what they liked in the community, but then they talked about some of their concerns or problems that they saw in the community, and got together with affinity groups of kids who wanted to work on those same problems or concerns. And they did a problem-solving cycle, and I had a little slide here, but it didn't quite work. But basically, they identified the problem, they went out and gathered data and information on the problem. They interviewed people from the Sheriff's Department, people from the city, there are fellow students, people who are impacted, community service organizations, to find out what the real facts on the problems were. And then they considered alternatives, and they brainstormed alternatives, and they came up with a solution, and they implemented a plan. And they will talk to you all about it. But there were five groups altogether. And so we're going to just mention a couple of the other groups, because they were more related to solutions in the school, and the two that are here tonight are more connected to this city. So I just want to leave space for Gretchen and Karen to give a brief overview of the other groups.
Hi. So the three other groups that aren't here tonight, one is a group that focused on littering specifically, and with the support of Mr. Ward, one of their success stories is next year, they actually will be working with Recycle Works for the first time to have some recycling bins at Hatch. So that's a huge success. The other group, there was another group that focused on marine mammal safety, and they contacted the Marine Mammal Center to collect their data, and in the end, decided to run an awareness campaign. And they went in front of the students and found a video and did a presentation in an assembly lifestyle at lunchtime. And the third group was focused on pets not being spayed and neutered, and seeing that as a real concern and safety issue as well. And so they also launched an awareness campaign to educate people around the importance of that. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce the two groups who are here. And we are going to start with the Traffic Safety Group. And so we'd like to invite up Mara, Diego, Joanna, and Michael.
Welcome to the podium, kids. Tell us, tell us what you learned. What do you, what do you have to share with us tonight on traffic safety?
Traffic Safety, created by Mara, Diego, Michael, and Joanna. Who are we? Why are we here? We are part of the Hatch Leadership Club, and we are here to talk to you about road safety and our wonderful community of Half Moon Bay. We will talk to you about the dangers of specific crosswalk areas we analyzed, and how we can improve those crosswalks.
This year, this year, the Leadership Club volunteers asked us to analyze a problem we see in our community. Since we all chose road safety as our concern, we, we were grouped together.
The main intersection that we, that, let me start over. The main intersection that we, that, we, that we focused our attention on was the intersection of Kelly and Pila Cito's Avenue, because there has been an accident there. We think there should be a crossing guard there, because a little girl died there once because of a camper van hit her. The camper van couldn't see over her, over his big camper, and the little girl was so small, the camper hit her. If there was a crossing guard there, he or she would, would tell them when to be, to go, and these kinds of accidents wouldn't happen.
We also noticed that some people don't go to speed limit. We contacted a local sheriff who said that the speed limit in school zones is 25 miles per hour. Along with speeding, some people don't stop at the stop sign at Kelly and Pila Cito's. We think this is especially dangerous during pickup and drop-off times during school. There was a crossing guard stationed there, people would, people would stop at the stop signs and also go to the speed limit.
Our solution to these problems we listed is a crossing guard. A crossing guard would keep people from being able to not stop at the stop sign, and he or she would tell them when to go, so people are safe during pickup and drop-off time. The crossing guard would be a volunteer, so we wouldn't have to pay them.
The crossing, the crossing guard will be stationed between 7:30 and 8:30 a.m., where people 1:50 and 2:50 and 2:05, when the 1st, 2nd, and 3rd graders get out of school and walk home, and between 2:35 and 3:00, when the 4th and 5th graders get out of school and walk home.
A crossing guard would be cost virtually nothing and help lots of people, so why not ask for volunteers to help with it?
Do you have any questions about the crossing guard?
Thank you. That was, that was great information. You're great readers. Give everybody, everybody give them a hand.
We still have one more slide.
No, no wait, don't go away. I, I think what you've done is identified a really important thing. And, oh, you've got another slide. Okay. I thought I asked for questions, sorry.
We hope you will consider helping us to put in crossing guard at the intersection of Kelly and Pila Cito's Avenue. Thank you for listening.
Well, thank you. I think it's important you got that last slide in there. I'm going to tell you, and that's true, volunteers will be free, but I'm going to tell you something. Insurance is another piece of this, so you've got to remember, nothing is ever free, but it's a solution that can be worked out. And I think it would be important for the city to work with the school district to figure out how we can get that to happen, and maybe that's something that we can do over the summer. So thank you so much for doing this. This is really important. You are, are great leaders, and you're on your way to identifying wonderful things to make your community better. So thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you. That information that you gave us really helped.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, may I make a brief comment, a little history lesson to these great leaders? When Hatch School was built, believe it or not, it was for 7th and 8th grade, and I was the first graduating class from Hatch in 1959. And we did have a debate, believe it or not, with leadership, and it was about oil and electricity. How did I just remember that? But things haven't changed, but great leaders started out of Hatch, see? So congratulations, you leaders. You'll be up here someday.
Now, now we have our next group, and I think we have two groups. Was there another group that wanted to speak?
Yep, we'd like to invite up our homelessness group, Natalie Kerthoys, Ashley Malarki, and Tiffany Gonzalez.
The problem of homelessness. What we are, we want to see happen. We want there to be a homelessness shelter in Half Moon Bay. People can stay there until they find a permanent home, job or home. Details, we want there to be showers, a room for them to stay in, a doctor in case they have medical issues, someone who can help them find a job, clothes and laundry facilities for the people who are staying in the homeless shelter. Some ways to raise the money that we thought of were ask for donations from local businesses, ask for donations from people. We could get a grant and get funding from local state or the federal government. Thank you for listening to our ideas. We hope you add a homeless shelter to the general plan update. Like Natalie Kerthoys said, we want a homeless shelter with doctors and counselors and a place for homeless people to stay with no cost. And also, we want them to do job training, take showers, and get clean clothes for interviews. So thank you for helping our dream come true.
We, we also, this morning at the Catholic Worker, we, we helped with their food drive and their, for their food and clothes drive, which they had items for people, and they had food that they could take. They had like nectarines and peaches and other vegetables that people could take home for free, and they were giving those out. And me and Ashley went and helped at the food and clothes drive that the Catholic Worker had. It was definitely a great experience, because you think of these people, how unfortunate they are, but in reality, they're actually just the same as you. It was a great experience to give these people clothes, food, and I enjoyed being there. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Now, now, some of the things that you mentioned are really important, and I'm glad, I was going to mention the Catholic Worker Charity, so I'm glad you'd had the opportunity to work with them. We've also got something that's in the community now with part of the county that we hadn't had before. It's called the HOT Team, and that's initials that stand for Homeless Outreach Team. And they come in and help some of the people here. But some other things you guys could do, you know when you stay in a hotel and you get those little shampoos and those little soaps? If you save those, when you go to the hotel, and you can bring them, because they're not big, and that's a great thing to give to people who don't have homes. You share and collect them. Maybe next year at school, you could start a pile and gather all those for when people stay in hotels and don't use those little shampoos. Gather them, because that's what the homeless can use too. I think you've done a wonderful job at reaching out, and your compassion too, to help people is very important. So we're also proud of you. Thank you so much for doing this.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And your teachers have any last comments you want to make, or any way we can follow up during the summer, or when school starts next year? We'd be happy to come and talk if the leadership team meets after school or something?
They usually meet over lunch hour, and it's 4th and 5th graders, so the 5th graders are kind of mentoring the 4th graders. And I want to mention that Miriam's here, who's a high schooler who got a leadership award, who also has been encouraging the students, so it's really important that it continues. But I have to say, these two groups, one, the traffic safety one, is now in their second year working on it. It'd be wonderful if the city has anything that they could do to work with them and communicate with them, because they are really committed and passionate about it. And also, the homelessness group has talked about that they want to continue throughout the summer, and they're even gathering a fundraising plan. So if there's any point person that they could be in communication with, so that they can continue to support this effort till it's their dream, as they say, comes true, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much. And Magda can continue to be your, your point person, but just on, on the thing of, you know, the crossing guards, council, do you have an interest in having staff follow up that and work with the school district to see what we could do in the future of that?
So a quick comment. So thank you for the presentations. Your leaders, most kids are not at a city council meeting tonight. You guys are, and you're sharing ideas that are important for our community, so you should be commended for that. So thank you for sharing your ideas. I'd like to see staff look at the signage in that area, at Pila Cito's and Kelly, and the crossing guard idea, and see if we can't develop a way to support crossing and safety at that intersection that was pointed out to us. I think now it's been brought to our attention, and we should do something about it.
So again, to council, for the crossing guard to work with the school district to see what we can come up with over the summer, it will be insurance that will be the thing. There, I'm sure there are a lot of volunteers, but it'll be insurance that we'll need to work out with, and as well as the, and yeah, there's lots of details of people, and we can work with the Sheriff's Department in establishing that.
Yeah, we talked about this issue over and over back in, I think it was the late 90s, and we're not able to crack it. But I think it's definitely worth trying again and identifying all the various issues to see if there's resolution. There's got to be some solution to it. A lot of it is, you know, making up our minds, we want to solve it. So, yeah, same problems, insurance, what you just mentioned, yeah, let's, let's try again.
I don't want to-
We're happy to bring something forward.
So I don't want to go too long, but crossing guard is a great idea, but there, there may be other, other variables that could come into play, whether of signage, speeding was mentioned, and maybe there's, again, we'll have to collaborate with our partners in the community, the school district and others, but there are those, the signs that always make me slow down, which are the, that tell you your speed when you're, when you're going through a specific, a certain zone, and other things we could do. But I think we should take on this issue.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make one last final comment-
Oh, yes.
-related to that intersection? The kids did a great job bringing forward the perspective of safety and crossing there. As a parent who has been driving a carpool for about five years, right through that intersection at all of those times, that's the backup. And, and another thing that a crossing guard could offer would actually be flow of traffic, and having that line not go out all the way down Highway 1. But, you know, being able to stop people with forethought and planning and group people across, I think could, is just another way to look at that. So, thank you.
Thank you. No, you're all welcome to stay. If you need to go watch a basketball game, I totally understand, and somebody needs to tell me a score soon. And so thanks so much for coming, and we'll keep in touch with you guys over the summer. And if we don't see you individually, we'll see you over at Hatch when school begins too. But hopefully, we'll get some of these things resolved. Thank you so much. You guys have done a great job. Have a good summer. And it is Parks and Recreation Month coming up. Youth Summit Report. I'm sure it's on, yes. Now, our Youth Summit Report will be by Charzad.
Thank you. So, update, it is halftime. The score is 43 to 45, Warriors ahead.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Yes. So you don't have to look at me. I put some pictures up, and our wonderful city clerk's going to help me go through some of the pictures. These are some pictures of the event. So we just had our Youth Summit on May 28th at Cunha Middle School. And I'd like to first start by thanking some of the organizations that were really a part of it. And a big thank you goes to the city of Half Moon Bay and City Council for actually helping make this happen. The second one is the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, Lieutenant John Munsey, who was a fantastic, fantastic leader, and helped oversee the whole thing. Career Unified School District, and I have to say, our lunch lady, Sandra, she really came to the rescue, and she was fantastic. Safe Route to Schools, Carlene had been, this is her second year working with us, and it's been a really great partnership and collaboration. San Mateo County Sheriff's Activities League, Boys and Girls Club of the Coastside, Half Moon Bay Lions, and the FBI. These are some of the sponsors that were, the groups that helped put this on. Some of the raffles we were able to give away were custom bike and helmet, a very cool Soul Republic headphones. We have a Samsung Chromebook and mini iPad among, with gift certificates for restaurants, and goodie bags for the kids, shirts. It was a really fantastic giveaways for the kids, and really, pretty much, a lot of people walked away with something that day. So our speakers of the day, we started out with Sean Chase, Deputy Chase with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, and he had a panel of high school students from Pila Cito's High School, and talk about their experiences with high school, what to do and not to do. And it was really, one of the speakers just broke down crying, it was so emotional. And we were lucky enough to tape the whole thing, and it's online and available for you to hear on our local radio station website, 1710 a.m. If you go to their website, you'll be able to hear that presentation. So it's just so dynamic. It was really great, having the kids talking to the kids. We had Special Agent Chris Calderon from the FBI Cyber Division talking to the kids about cyber safety. Lunchtime programming, we had our Half Moon Bay High School Principal, Ron Campania, with a panel of kids talking about, you know, AP classes, sports, what to do and not to do. This was a transitional focus from 8th grade to 9th grade, from junior high to high school. How do we help transition the kids? What kind of support? It's wonderful to see the future leaders, and it's great that these, that their schools are developing them. And one, one of our goals was that we brought, the first photo that you saw was a group of high school kids. So we had almost 100 high school kids this year that came down to participate in the event, and they worked as mentors. So what, you know, the first year of the Youth Summit, there was a lot, as you guys were all there, there was a lot of adults talking to kids. As the Youth Summit's evolving, we have more kids talking to kids, youth mentoring youth, and it was fantastic. So with the help of Ron Campania and David, David was really great, instrumental with bringing some of the kids down, we were able to do a 10 to 1 ratio. So every 10 junior high student had one high school mentor, and at some times, it was even more, just to hang out with them, just to talk to them, and kind of show them the ropes. Some of the high, then we had a high school club jam. So we brought the clubs down to, to show the kids, these are what's available this summer. Not only this summer, but when you get up to the high school, these are the clubs you can join, which last year, we got such great feedback that, wow, we've never had so many, you know, new 9th grade attendees to these clubs. Well, because they knew about it. So some of the club jams participants were the Art Club, Big Sister, Little Sister, California Scholarship Federation, French Club, Interact, Mog Trial, Six Man, and Surf Club. So these were some of the ones that were present. As, you know, last year was our first year, so there was a little bit of hype this year. The kids were like, oh, we loved it last year. We loved being a part of it, and we heard some great feedback. They're looking forward to participating again next year. And we took care of our high school kids. We gave them some great swag, gave them a backpack and some speakers, Wi-Fi speakers, Bluetooth speakers, so it was fantastic. They loved it. Just to say thank you, because it is around finals time, and we did take most of their day. So they left at 10:30 in the morning and spent the rest of the day at Cunha. So we really did realize that was a big sacrifice on their part. And then on the outside, we had a climbing wall, we had to meet the FBI station, we had to meet the U.S. Marshal's Office station. Thank you to, to the David Siegel and Marshal Don O'Keefe, who also came down, sends his hello, and he was there to support the event. And Cameron did ice cream floats, and we can't thank the Lions enough for their continued support and participation. They fed all of us, they had fed over 300 members with their fantastic hot dogs. And it was really great. We had the city staff there. Thank you so much to Alex, to Magda, to Dante, they came down. We helped put them to work. Thank you Farmer John for being down there. Everybody, they came down, we put them to work, and it was great. We also, we were able to have a city general plan table out. So we had Jill Acus there with her staff, that they were able to talk to the kids and interact with them, and find out a little bit more about the general plan. And of course, we had our time capsule. We had our time capsule there, we had some entries. And just a side note, we also took the time capsule to Seacrest School a few days after that and got almost 250 more entries. So it was a really great day of fun. It was a great example of wonderful collaboration of all of our agencies here to service the kids and, and bringing more youth to mentor youth. It was just fantastic, and thank you again for supporting this event and make it a priority. You have any questions?
Well, that's great. Thanks, Charzad, for, for sharing this again. It's been a great event the last few years, starting with the Astronaut, the speaker last year, and it's great we're able to use this as an outlet to get some feedback from the kids. We did that last year with the library and what they wanted. So that's good that you're asking them more about stuff. And I know the speakers are very inspirational and impactful for them.
Really amazing. Willie Stokes was our keynote again, and he had, he had 300 kids in that room, and they were, you could hear a pen drop. He got them down, quieted, and he delivered a very impactful message. Again, it's online. I really suggest everyone, and one feedback I did get today, because we were able to bring kids up, everybody on the coast was invited. If you're an 8th grader and you're on the coast, you are invited. And so we brought kids up from Pila Cito, I mean, from Pascodaro, we invited Seacrest, and I just got some feedback that the Pascodaro kids were just so fantastic. It was such a treat for them, and for them to meet other kids, especially as they go up to the high school, they felt so instrumental. And one of them won the raffle of the new bike. So that was really fantastic for them. Really good.
And I agree, and thank you for keeping the Lions engaged. They're wonderful at that. They are the expert barbecuers.
They're, they're a treasure. They're a community treasure.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. A lot of input from you this evening. And we'll continue with another one of our partners from Recreation Committee. This is Park and Rec Month, and Marcia, if you want to come to the podium, I will give you-
Can you use the score update too?
All right. I'll have to lower this for me. So this is proclaiming July as Park and Rec Month, and park and recreation programs foster human development, help young people develop, grow into healthy adults, and recreation facilitates community problem-solving, and thousands of children in California, adults and seniors benefit from all the wide range of services and programs that parks and recs provide. So we're happy to present this to you- So we're happy to present this to you as Chair of the Park and Recreation Commission.
Great. Thank you so much. On behalf of all of the committee members for Parks and Recreation, we thank you. And we also thank you for the very productive meeting that we had tonight and for your great input. And we look forward to making it a better year than ever. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Marcia. Now to announcements of community activities. Just have one quick one that's going on tomorrow night. This is a benefit for Coastside Hope. It's their annual barbecue. It's from 5 to 8 out at the Mavericks Event Center. It's only 10 bucks. And, oh no, it's not. Sorry. You saved $10. It's $50, but if you buy it tonight from Charzad, it's 40. There's live music, a silent auction, and it's over at the Mavericks Event Center. So if you have any questions, call Coastside Hope. This is a big barbecue benefit for them. Thank you. And Council, any community activities coming up this weekend you'd like to share? All right, hearing none. Report out from, we had no closed session this evening, so we will go to City Council reports. And I'll just welcome back Councilmember Penrose. Looks refreshed and tanned.
Buonasera.
I think that says it all. Good to have you back. Vice Mayor Kowalczek.
Just want to report out from a sewer authority meeting. We had a special meeting where we reviewed our recruiting for our interim general manager and our general manager, and we are still actively recruiting for both positions.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller.
I'll go generally here. Tip a Cop the other night was very successful, I hope, for them. They did a good job. A lot of generous people and a lot of generous donors and purchasers. So that was great. Also, you wonder what the Regional Water Quality Control Board does. And this is our storm water permit for San Mateo County, that we are also a member of this permit holder. So I brought this to share with staff. I had to recuse, so I didn't even sit in a room for eight hours. But anyhow, the opportunity of this hearing was to provide the permitees and stakeholders to communicate their interests and comments directly to the board. I think they had 60 speakers. So this will go to staff here in a minute. And then, if I may, take another quick personal note for anniversaries. It was my wedding anniversary Sunday, but we kept working. But tomorrow morning AM, June 17, 1963, the Navy recruiter came over tomorrow morning and picked myself up in Silvio Medina, my buddy. I make bells, my lifelong friend. And we were shipped out. And boy, where did those 52 years go? Or no, yeah, 52 years, huh? Anyway, so that's, in memory of all of our sailors in the world, I have their tie on tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Reddick.
Yes, I missed Tip a Cop unfortunately, but I did attend the San Francisco Airport Community Roundtable. And most of the meeting was devoted to an update on a new traffic pattern that was instituted in March and which, so the original pattern had planes coming in from the south over Big Sur and then, you know, going up by the bay. Not very many problems there. But in March, they shifted the arrival pattern to go over Santa Cruz, SoCal, and the summit area of Santa Cruz, on the ridgeline there. And there were approximately 75 residents from Santa Cruz there complaining about the jet noise. It's pretty much nonstop, like every 30 seconds or so. So the roundtable is submitting letters to the Federal Aviation Administration to try to get a handle on it. Not sure that they can do anything. The roundtable exists to take input and share it, but, you know, no control, so. But it was remarkable in that there may be further shifts ultimately of the arrival pattern. And Half Moon Bay is going to need to be vigilant, because I've noticed just in the last couple of weeks, they've been what is called vectoring the traffic due to probably weather conditions or wind conditions. But I don't know if you noticed, but like last weekend, there was a substantial increase in arrival traffic over Half Moon Bay. And it was shortly after this meeting. And I don't know if they were giving them relief or what was going on. But I'm our representative and will be looking out for any, you know, changes in patterns that might affect us. So that was a pretty interesting meeting, actually. And the residents looked exhausted. They're not sleeping. You know, they're really severely impacted. So that was remarkable. I attended the senior coast sider, senior home rehab day in Canadaco doing gardening for three or four hours. We had a great team. It was, it was actually fun. I'll probably sign up again for next year. I would recommend it to everyone. You can do a little of everything or focus on something you'd like to do, whether it's siding or gardening or whatever. But we had a really good time. Then I attended the SAM meeting with Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Kowalczek. And so we have some thorny issues there we're working through. And then tomorrow, I'll be going to the Coastside Hope barbecue, so.
Thank you. And to follow up with your planes, I did notice there were more. There's an app called Plane Finder, so it can identify the plane that's flying over you. It tells you the flight number and even you find out when it's scheduled to land. But I had noticed there was a lot more and I think it was due to weather every now and then we have that. But I can understand how Santa Cruz residents are upset. I attended a sea level rise kickoff meeting with the county. Congresswoman Spear literally kicked it off and stressed the importance of sea level rise. And the county is working with all of the cities to, you know, look into the future for the next 50 years. A lot of that does come down to mitigating storm water and flood control as well. When they first started talking about sea level rise, it really was concentrated on the bay side and we spoke up. So now Half Moon Bay and the coast side, after they say sea level rise, we are in it. They had the maps out. They've hired some experts. They brought in someone from the Netherlands, because obviously, those folks have a lot of experience with that. So there's a lot of great work. The county has funded this. And Jill Akis, who is working on our pop-up neighborhood meetings, was a presenter in that too and presented some of the things going on in the coast. Also went to disaster preparedness day at the fairgrounds. Always important, make sure you have three days of supplies and water for your family and for your pets too, just in case power or anything goes out. That's the big stressor. It's not one day, three days. And also was happy to go to the opening of Diane Castello's photography business called Fog Dog. She takes wonderful pictures of people, but also specializes in portraits and pets. And Diane has just opened up at the Spanish Town Shop on 92. And that whole venue, the owners are reinvigorating it. There's some new shops. Definitely check it out in there. There's a record store, some new antique stores, and say hello to Diane in her shop. She took our photographs earlier this evening. And that was a busy day, because I also played softball with the Big Wave Challenger Team and that was the closing day of Little League season. And the kids were just real fun. So shout out to Cassie and all of the, my little friends on that softball team. We did have a library JPA meeting and they've kicked off throughout the whole system of the library, the summer reading programs, so kids can, have a selection of books that they can read through the summer to continue. And also, there's an internship for 40 youth that will be spread out throughout the system. So we'll have some teens working at the library to help out. And last, at the CCAG meeting, we did have a presentation by the SF Bay Water Board, municipal regional storm water for NPDS permitting. That was very prevalent, again, the storm water, the flooding and control and what we can do. Some cities are really impacted, specifically in Redwood City. There's some low-lying things that really wipe out a neighborhood. And last Saturday, I was at a recycle works class next door. And there's a second part to it. And we're going to open it up to the whole community. This is energy efficiency. And what this Saturday's program is going to concentrate on is all the rebates available. That's for lighting, for water control. There's water barrel rebates, toilet rebates, a lot of information. It's normally a class that you have to register, but when we had the facilitators over there and I showed them the farmer's market, we thought, we've got such a great captive audience. So bringing aside, so from 10:30 to 1 o'clock next Saturday, when you come to the farmer's market, pop in the emergency building and you can get a lot more information on how to be more energy efficient throughout your home, save money, and be good to the environment as well. So those are my updates now. And we'll go now to City Manager for, oh.
I had feedback from several people who attended the Sea Level Rise Symposium, who said very good things about Jill Akis. So our staff, so I just wanted to share that. They liked her presentation.
Yeah. She's been great and she's been wonderful for the pop-up neighborhood meetings. And I think we have a couple more left. Maybe the City Manager can talk about that. But I know Deborah has attended a couple of those as well as myself. And they've been really good for getting information specifically for the people in specific neighborhoods. Everyone's got a different set of concerns, so it's been great information for us. And next, we'll hear from City Manager. Great. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. A couple of reports I'd like to ask first, from our interim Community Development Director, John Dowdy, who can provide an update on Pillar Cedos Bridge and Mac Dutra Park Plaza. And perhaps he can give us an update too on the pop-up, neighborhood pop-up meetings. I think we've got maybe three or so left.
Follow the directions. John Dowdy, thank you for letting me have the opportunity to be the interim Community Development Director. And big shoes to fill literally and figuratively with Dante leaving, so, but we're moving forward. With regard to Pillar Cedos, I am happy to announce that today we had our concurrence letter from National Marine Fisheries Service. We understand that the, a similar letter is in the works for signature at US Fish and Wildlife Service. Those are two critical pieces to US Army Corps of Engineers being able to issue permit, which then in line comes with the Regional Water Board being able to also issue permit for that. So we hit a big hurdle today and went over it, which I'm thankful for. And I think the community will be as well. So we're moving forward. We understand, hopefully by the end of the month, we should have California Fish and Wildlife Service permit is what we've been told. And so everything looks as if the permitting side of the world will move positively. We have also met with the contractor, Granite Rock Company. And so they're moving forward and we've issued them a notice to proceed. And they are moving forward with shop drawings and all the requirements to proceed to designing the prefabricated bridge, the superstructure for Pillar Cedos. So everything is moving along. And at this point, all signs are indicating to, an affirmative to opening a new bridge up this year in 2015. So we're still, have to be a little cautiously optimistic and remain a little cautious. There are still hurdles to deal with and particularly the environmental, but it looks like things are good. So that's great news on that front. Mac Dutra is, it looks like Ant Hill kind of out there today. And over this last week, our partner, Half Moon Bay Grading and Paving, have been really working very hard. JJR, the concrete folks, Scapes has been working, the electrician's been working out there. And if you see, there's going to be new pouring of the concrete and the stage is up and the seat wall is up and the rock is going in for the subgrade for the pavers. So everybody is working vigilantly and diligently to try to meet the 1st of July. There are some real challenges with some materials. So we are playing both sides of this issue. One is that we're working diligently to try to get as much of that done and hopefully be able to do something for the July 4th celebration, which we know is a critical and a desirable issue. But we're also working closely with Lions Club to make sure that the pancake breakfast will go off without a hitch and regardless of where and how we try to work that together. So 4th of July will be great and regardless, and we'll try to work through that issue. But you're going to see significant improvements toward Mac Dutra. The pop-ups, we have three left at this point. Tomorrow night, Thursday night, and Saturday. I know the Saturday one is, the Saturday event is the downtown area. And we'll be at the, what's the, Kitty Fernandez. The other two, right off the top of my head, I cannot recall, but I can certainly pull that up and get that information. But there are two Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then one on Saturday as well. And then we'll start into the 25th and 27th, which are the big community workshops. They're going to be the same for both days. One will be on a Saturday and one will be on a Thursday evening. They're the same programs, you don't have to come to both. But it pleased for the community to come one of those nights. And then we'll head forward into more topic-related subjects into July and August and September ultimately. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I know everyone's working hard on a Mac Dutra Park. And I know they're relying on some vendors to get some things done. So I'm glad we have a contingency plan for Lions Club, so we can celebrate the 4th with our traditional pancakes.
If I could just mention, echo some of the comments, and I think you have all heard these comments as well. The neighborhood pop-up meetings have gone really, really well. And I think we've been able to hear from and speak with lots of community members who we've not met before, which is great. We've been able to establish relationships with some of these folks. They get to know us, we get to know them. And I'll tell you, the staff is just completely energized from these meetings. Each morning, they come back and say, oh, we had another really great meeting and I hear all about it. And so it's been going really well.
Good, thank you. We have no cards for public forum. We'll go into consent calendar and are there any items to be pulled? I know there's a correction on number six.
Yeah, I'd like to pull number six.
Okay. Was that just a correction or pulling?
Well, I just wanted to add the requirement, yeah, I want to pull it.
Okay.
And so, and with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent calendar items 1 through 14, except number six.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. Do we, roll call? Aye.
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 Vice Mayor Frazier?
Yes.
Mayor Frazier?
Yes. Now, we'll go quickly to item number six.
Yeah, so my point on number six on page 37 of the packet, I think there's a missing item. We just want to add in that a requirement for the city engineers to have a PE, for that person to be a licensed PE, professional engineer. I just want to make that addendum.
All right. That's noted. Can we have a motion on that?
I move to approve item number six of the consent agenda, adding the requirement for the, for the disposition to be a licensed professional engineer.
I'll second. And we can do that by voice vote. So all in favor of item number six, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
There are no nays. Motion passes. Thank you, Council. We'll move now to public hearing number one to introduce an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Half Moon Bay, amending the Half Moon Bay Municipal Code to align the code to the city's organizational structure.
Good evening, Mayor Frazier and Councilmembers. Reed Galogly, Deputy City Attorney. This is just a brief presentation. As you may have learned over the last several weeks, the city has done some reorganization in the sense of changing some job titles as a requirement to make sure that our code currently matches our new organizational structure. There's some name changing that has to go forward. There's no substantive changes anywhere in the code that are being accompanied by this proposed change. It's simply replacement of the words Planning Director with Community Development Director. So there's no ambiguity or confusion for anyone who references our code as to which individual at City Hall they need to select, maybe obtain a permit from or obtain an approval from. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to entertain them. But otherwise, this is a fairly innocuous ordinance as they go.
Councilmembers, any comments? If none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to introduce an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Half Moon Bay, amending the Half Moon Bay Municipal Code to align the code to the city's organizational structure.
Second. Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes completely. Thank you. Move now to item number 15, and let's discuss the establishment of city policy for resolution of claims below a certain amount.
Good evening again, Mayor Frazier and council members. Reed Galogly, Deputy City Attorney. We're presenting tonight to you the opportunity to open a discussion regarding the establishment of a policy to resolve claims that the city receives. As detailed in the staff report, the Government Tort Claims Act sets forth a procedural process which any individual who has a claim for money damages against the government must comply with in order to pursue legal remedies. Oftentimes, depending on the value of claims and the meritoriousness of them, the disposition of the claim can often be overkill. And what I mean by that is, somebody may come with a claim that is completely meritless, but would require council to be discussing it in closed session, when ultimately, it's a decision that's best delegated to a staff member with the appropriate level of authority to resolve the claim. And by resolve, that can be as simple as rejecting the claim, saying that it's not going to be paid based on a variety of good reasons, or accepting the claim, accepting liability, and paying that claim. A good example is if somebody's bumper were dinged when a city maintenance truck pulled up behind them at a stop sign. That would be a meritorious claim, and we would want to replace the bumper. We wouldn't want to delay that claim, have it brought to council, have the person, the individual who suffered damages wait for the next council meeting. Obviously, you guys have gone on break before, you can appreciate that. It would be a long time for somebody to wait. So there are many cities out there that have established policies, and they're all different. And they allow a person with the appropriate authority, and that can be whoever city council decides it is. It can be the city manager, the city attorney, a city risk manager, in cities that have that position. But you can determine the limits of settlement or rejection. So, for example, it might be useful to say, any claims that are below a $10,000 value, below a small claims limit, will allow city staff, whoever that person is, the city manager's office, to reject and to accept such claims, so that the city attorney or the city manager can then say, based on statutory immunity, we're going to reject the claim, we're not going to trouble council with it, or based upon the good merit to the claim, we're going to resolve it. It's a low-value figure, and it swiftly and efficiently resolves the issue. Conversely, you can set those limits in a different way. You can say, we want all claims that are going to be rejected brought to us for the opportunity to consider, but claims that are going to be resolved less than $10,000, go forth and settle those on your own. I've attached a couple attachments, which explain to you that different cities of different populations have different thresholds they use to settle the cases. And what you're seeing there is payment, payment amount, not the amount for rejection, but if the city, whatever, it's the city attorney or city manager, the city official reaches that determination, they can settle the case up to, usually $25,000 is a pretty typical limit. Rejection authority can be set differently as well. I also would like to note that Commissioner, Councilmember Reddick had asked, do we have a history of our last claims, what's been going on with the city? So working with Julia Carter, our finance director, we were able to pull up our A-Bag summary. I don't have copies for all of you now, but what I can represent to you, and I can obviously pass these around, we'll make them available at some point if we do so, is that the city has about three to four claims a year, and they're not high-value claims. In the last five years, we've averaged about four a year, and they range from, my example of having a car dinged by a city maintenance truck, to a trip and fall on the coastal trail, to a trip and fall on the sidewalk. We've also had some property claims where city buildings are adjoining other buildings, and there's been water damage and the like. And there haven't been a lot of these claims that have been significantly high in terms of the value that we have ever paid, the lowest, I mean, nothing above $10,000 in the last five years has been paid out. Obviously, it doesn't require much to change that, but ultimately, that's sort of what the pattern looks like for the city of Half Moon Bay over the last five years. Not a ton of claims, not an overwhelming amount of claims, certainly not a very large number of high-value claims, but ultimately, they're being processed and handled right now, according to the informal practice of what's existed, which is bringing matters to the council for consideration in closed session, regardless of the merit of the claim, regardless of the value of the claim. They've all been brought to you. So it becomes a question, a policy question for the council to decide, how do we want to deal with claims, both on the rejection end and on the payout end? And you can set different policy limits for both of those, but it is a call that you'll have to make and what you're comfortable with. I don't know if you have any specific questions at this time, but I would like to stop speaking, because I know I can go on and on and on here as a lawyer. Is there anything else I can?
And Vice Mayor Koaltschek?
Just a quick question, what is the city manager's current signing authority?
It's $30,000.
And we would be informed as we meet weekly about this, so it wouldn't be just, it would be done, and often, none of us would know. Each one of us would be informed as this is percolating and happening. It'd just be, we wouldn't have to wait three weeks if we had a meeting skipped and it could be expedited. So you're looking at a 10,000-foot level range, dollar range?
I'm not proposing a particular dollar amount. This is just a discussion we wanted you to have openly as the council. Do you want to put a formal policy out there, changing the limits for rejection versus settlement? Would you like city staff to resolve claims below $20,000 in value without troubling the council, depending on whether they're a valid claim or an invalid claim, whether we're going to reject them or accept them? And it's really an option that you have, and we can do also, one of the things you'll notice in those attachments is, some of the cities have quarterly or annual reporting, so every three months, during the city manager's report, they can say, during our last fiscal quarter, we received five claims for a total of, if we were to pay all of them, what, $30,000? We only paid one of them, and we only paid $5,000 worth of it. That would be a way we could provide you with the reporting. Right now, I think the informal practice, I've only come to you on a couple items in closed session, so I'm not sure in terms of real longevity over the course of a couple years, if you get approached very frequently, but it would be a way to simply clean that up and have it sort of brought to you all in one plate at the end of a quarter, or even at the end of the year, since there aren't a lot of claims that the city of Half Moon Bay encounters throughout the course of a fiscal year.
Thoughts?
Yeah, thank you. First, I think it's great we don't have a lot of claims. I think that's very positive. And I would just like to ask the city manager for past experiences in this situation, number one, and number two, if the National City Managers Association have ever discussed this in your seminars.
Yes, it's pretty typical to have this in cities, and often, it is connected to the city manager's authority or something lower. So 25 is pretty typical, as Reed mentioned. So it's pretty typical. It's a way to try to streamline some of the conversations. We don't have to have the closed session, and I would recommend that we would have a quarterly report to the council, whether there's a claim or not. We could even say there is no claim, but that way, we can keep you abreast on a quarterly basis.
Yeah, and I think, you know, from my experience, it looks like, it's always, it's pretty consistent, the city manager and the city attorneys work pretty close together. So it looks like a lot of these are city manager, city attorney, but I think city attorney's very valuable in that process.
So not only could we have an update as it's happening, but then, in addition, every quarter, have an aggregate of what's happening? Is that something council's interested in?
So, in general, I'm uncomfortable with this kind of thing as a policy, because it is, and I'll be really clear, MAGDA has 100% of my support, but just if I step back and just think of the role, and down the road, who's in the role, whatever, of the city manager role, or who can write a check? I always think there should be a check and a balance. In our accounts payable and accounts receivable, the city, there's a check and a balance. You can't, one individual can't do both, because then you're exposed to leakage. So I'm not opposed to the idea, but there needs to be a check and a balance to it. Otherwise, it creates an opportunity for there to be leakage, and I want to be really tight about that kind of thing. So that's why I asked the signing authority, because I think that's sort of good. I'm a little reluctant. There's a lot of cities, you know, thank you for the reference list, but there's also a lot of cities that aren't there. And the way they handle it, I'm assuming, is ad hoc, or they go to their council? Would you have any background on that?
The cities identified in the attachment were the cities that responded to our survey. We don't get 100% response across the state, unfortunately. I wish I could get better responses, even when you call up cities directly and ask them, or even do your own research, it can be difficult to figure out what their practices or their official adopted policies are. This was a request that I made of a number of different cities, this was the response that I got. But to answer your question, yes, there are cities that don't have a settlement limit, that they grant authority to a city manager or a city attorney to resolve claims. They always have them presented to council. You know, that's probably the practice for much smaller cities. I think, you know, Half Moon Bay is a small city in terms of its population, but when you get into the 5,000s, the 3,000 range, those cases, they have so few claims that, and perhaps so few things going on in terms of what's going on in their cities, that they want to have more items brought to council, because they don't have a full plate all the time. I mean, I don't, I think you guys have a lot going on in the city of Half Moon Bay, but that's not to belie your concerns that, you know, you want to treat each claim the same and have it presented to council for an opportunity for consideration for rejection, or perhaps payment if appropriate.
Thank you. So I've expressed my concern, or my really concern, just a sort of a philosophy I have, I think I might be supportive of it if it coincided with, if a claim is paid, the council is informed. I don't want to wait a quarter, or a month, or a day. I think that can go hand in hand, because you could see how it could easily unravel, right?
I was asking us to know each week, as you're developing this, that you're doing this, if we decide that up to $10,000, so you're telling this, and then this gets just aggregated and like printed out, but that we're informed the whole time.
Yeah, I actually share Vice Mayor Koaltschek's concern about checks and balances. And I also noticed that there were, you know, hundreds of cities not mentioned here, as you did. So, you know, what did they do? It sounds like from our claim history, that there's not much of a problem there. So I don't even know if we have to go here, just based on our claims history. I certainly wouldn't want to give signing authority and then have it outsourced to a contractor, you know, to resolve. Sometimes, that's what cities do. I did a little research. So I wouldn't want to have this result in consultant contracts to resolve, for sure. So I think, you know, I'd be willing to do it on a trial basis, but I was thinking that, you know, I noticed the small cities here have about $10,000 and have monthly or quarterly reporting. So I'd be willing to stretch and go to $10,000 in monthly reporting as a start, but I agree with the mayor that we should be notified as an ongoing basis of what's happening, because there's always the opportunity for politics to enter in, for people to be accused of playing, you know, favorites, or, you know, I'm your enemy, you're doing this because, you know, I made you angry in some other event. So that's another reason why checks and balances are really important, that there are more eyes on the situation, and a little more, you know, transparency, or as much transparency as we can have, you know, with an item that might be potential litigation. So that's kind of where I'm going with this. Thanks for that information, by the way. I know I asked my question very late in the afternoon, and you responded, so thanks very much.
Any other discussion on this?
One thing that we might offer as a discussion point would be, in order to guard against the very concerns that you've expressed here of checks and balances, to put a policy forward that allows the city management to, at a staff level, reject claims but to not pay them unless it's brought to council. That would be useful, because there are a number of times that the city receives, pretty routinely, claims for which we have immunity, and which don't really merit a discussion. That being the case, it's always the council's discretion whether it wants to have that discussion. I just wanted to offer that up there, because that's a pragmatic thing. We do encounter that more frequently.
That's good. That's really good. Thank you for adding that. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, I think we've got some nodding heads. So this would come back to us in a formal, because this is just a first discussion on this?
And it sounds like the direction that the council wants is for a resolution that embodies a policy where city staff may reject claims below, and I need probably a dollar figure here, I would advise $10,000 or $15,000. And then anything that's paid, regardless of the value, is brought to council, if that's the council's wish and direction. I think I understand that, but if I'm unclear, please draw the lines for me.
Okay, it looks like everybody's comfortable with that. All right. Good, thank you for that.
And that is the last of our agenda items. Just one thing to recognize, and especially, I know that Mrs. Eda Mueller watches us. Congratulations on 46 years of marriage. We'll send them home soon after our closed session here, and we'll check a score and then go into closed session. So, good night, go Warriors. 75-68, Warriors.
Not that we're paying attention.